I now call to order the special session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April 21st, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Here.
We will now go to public comments on items that will not be discussed this evening. There's only one concerning a resolution, so if anyone would like to speak, please come forward, state your name, address for the record, and you will be given four minutes.
Good evening. Peter Lacks, 514 Ashland Avenue. Welcome to all of y'all. I know we can't talk at the work session, but I do have to comment that I can see your handprints already, how it's structured, time-wise, things to be done, so I'm proud that y'all are already on a structured schedule to move forward. One of the things that I know you'll be talking about is rules of procedure and such like that, and during the campaign, many of y'all spoke about how to have residents have more contact, and you've heard me come up here before about reinstating, if not actual Zoom, but Zoom calls or calls-in, because I know a lot of times I've left, I've gone home during that period and watched the meeting and still been able to comment, but there's others who don't even have the opportunity or the ability to come to hear y'all speak and maybe address you. But I want to talk about something else. This is something that I had brought up years ago myself, and I'm going to refresh some memories. 16:10 AM. Does anybody know what that is? Anybody know what 16:10 AM is? Okay. That is the public safety radio station we have, WPLY 710, if you listen. It broadcasts from the top of the fire station, has a range of about one mile or so, depending on that weather. It's a five, what they call, five kilowatt radio station. This is a neglected resource, and it has not been updated.
If you're interested in working for the City of Tarpon Springs, please check our website for a listing of current job openings or call us for information. The website is ci.tarpin-springs FL.us. That's ci.tarpin-springs FL.us, and the phone number is 727-938-3171.
How long has it been since we no longer had that website? No one's paying attention to this. So, I'm not sure what has to be done to go to the Federal Communications Commission to see if we can do an upgrade in our license, increase the power, such that we can expand it. If you listen to it, it's loops. It's loops about recycling, hurricane awareness, and contact in the city. Twenty-four hours a day, and we've got lost airtime. When you have your meetings, you could broadcast them over the radio for those people who don't have cable. They could listen in and call in. There's other ways to get people, the information out to them. A lot of old-world people still listen to radios. We've got an option to get that information. Another aspect, I know it's a little more creative, but shows. Have sessions where you have call-ins. People can call in and ask the mayor or the commissioner or the city manager questions, and it's broadcast over the radio, or at simulcast with the TV. You can simulcast the radio and the TV. So, as you go forward looking at ways to engage the community, I'd like to have you look at maybe some things that are a little outside of the box, but that can reach other people that aren't being reached at the current time. Thank you.
Anyone else with a public comment? I believe there aren't any. Let's move on to item one, which is Resolution 2022-17. Mr. Trask, if you could read it by title, please.
Yes, Mayor. This is Resolution 2022-17, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, supporting federal funding of the Craig Park Spring Bayou, Seawall, and sidewalk repair and resiliency upgrade project. I was reading Resolution 2022-17 by title only.
Thank you. City Manager La Couris, you have any comments you'd like to make on this?
Just that, as you saw, I sent to all of y'all probably about three-ish or so. We got the packet done for the congressmen. They have this resolution, and they're unsigned. They approved us first thing in the morning. Mr. Robertson is going to send that so they can replace the unsigned one with the signed one, so make sure as soon as this item's over. Tom, if you've got it to pass down the resolution, get the signatures, because it's going to be exchanged. But as you saw, we, we got a good amount of work done with some hard work of staff. The packet's in the hands of the congressmen, just waiting for the exchange of the signed document from the unsigned document.
Thank you. I'd like to go to public comments, if there's any public comments this evening on this particular item. If you could please come forward. I do not believe there are any. I'd like to have a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-17.
Second.
I'll second.
Streisner. I'd like to go to the commission for discussion now. Mr., or Vice Mayor Lunt, if I could start with you, please.
I'd just like to thank the community in general for the response that we got. There was a very short timeframe for us to react, and I know many, many people responded very, very positively to this, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Carr.
City Manager, I appreciate the work that the staff has done to put this together. I know it's a short notice that you had to pull all this together, so thank you for, for you and your staff to, to do this. It's good to see that the City of Tarpon Springs are trying to get their, their hands on some federal appropriations or earmarks to help with some of the projects around town. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner.
Yes, I also want to thank the staff. It was a flash to get this done so quickly. I need to comment that that was an amazing amount of literature that we got together in a very short period of time, and I think that this is a project that I'm looking forward to. So many people use the Spring Bayou. I've been around. It really has been let down for quite some time, so I also want to thank the staff, and thank you, Mark, for that. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I want to say thank you, city staff, for putting it all together, the packet fast underneath, less than a week, and I also want to say thank you, Mayor, because originally with the packet, that project wasn't going to be presented, and now it got presented. The congressman was able to select it, so that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy with that, too, in addition to the staff, which have done an excellent job on this. I'd like to thank all the residents that turned to and provided their letters of support that needed to go with this packet and anything else that accompanied that. There being no other comments from the commission. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt.
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Okay. That, that ends the agenda for this evening. Let's go to staff comments. Anyone? Major Trill, Mr. Trask.
No, sir.
No, sir.
Ms. Jacobs.
No comments.
Any of the commissioners have any comments this evening?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. I hear you. I adjourn at 6:38 PM. I now call to order the work session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April 21st, 2022 at 6:39 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Here.
We're going to go ahead right into the agenda this evening, and the first item on this, and we've got a scheduled adjournment time at about 9:45, so let's pace ourselves on this. Actually, 9:15, I believe, is what, is it 9:15?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to state what the meeting objective is. We've, we've got a lot of things here, and this is pretty much a clearinghouse of things that came up during the, the campaign. Residents have talked to all of us. They've talked at the commission meetings, and I, I think that everyone expects some consideration to be given to the items listed here. They've been on social media, so forth, if they weren't here publicly. City Manager La Couris, would you like to add to that?
Just that I think we got a, a great start with the session that we had with the new committee. We had a great start in seeing staff, and I think this is very important. We're, we're ready to get going. We know there's a lot to do in these times, so we're ready to get going as a team, and I think this workshop tonight will get us, get us together on that path, and we're ready to hit the road running. So, I think that's, that's important before our first real meeting next Tuesday, that we've had two chances to, to get started on the right track and move forward with all the projects and everything we need to do, and again, bringing in some things that, that came out of the campaign and the election.
The, the one thing I'd like to come out of this work session is these items that we'll talk about tonight, I don't think we need to have, obviously, another meeting on that, but if the city manager could publish and send us a memorandum of when he would expect to have these items back before us for action. Okay. Let's go to number two, rules of procedure, and I'd like for you to weigh in as well to see if something's been missed, but the items that I had were, of course, Zoom, remote participation by video, and also telephone, public comments being extended from four minutes to four minutes plus an additional two minutes or some variant of that, reading emails into the record, which I've discussed with the city clerk, and that seems doable. And also, I'd like to just kind of tweak one or two others on that, at, at least. The one thing that I would like to see kind of narrowed a bit is what any commissioner can put on the agenda. As I mentioned to you, I, of course, all of this is for discussion, and it's going to take a majority to approve, but we're a policymaking board, and I'd like for us to stick with policy, and anything that's not policy, I think, could be worked through, the city manager would, by any of the commissioners, and some process be established there that, that would come back to us, other than putting it on agenda and, and, and talking about it for some period of time, and really nothing coming out of it. So, that's all I have. Vice Mayor Lunt.
My comments pertain more to us talking a little bit more about getting Zoom back in and extending the time period for people to discuss, and that's about it.
Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the Zoom and phone calls, but I would caution the board about emails and reading emails in the record. It's something that we never did before COVID happened. At times, a board member would read an email into the record if they felt moved to. I think we all have that option to do that as well, but a good example would be what happened with the Ankle Harbors, is that there was two or 300 emails, and when you have something like that, where they're all similar, you're running into a case where it's a whole night of emails being read, where you could have gone through and said, "We received 150 emails for, 200 against," something along those lines. So, I just would, I would caution the board on that. If you're looking to keep the meetings at a more reasonable stature or timeframe, because at that, some, at that point, someone could really sabotage the meetings pretty quickly by sending emails for every item and have them be four minutes long. I just want to bring that to your attention, and I would caution to not have that as an option. But the commission, ourselves, can have the option. If they wanted to read something in the record, we could do that, but not every single one of them. Again, it's in the record. I think the city attorney can, can share that. When it's submitted, it's put into the record. If it's submitted to the clerk's office or the request is that way, but I would just, that would be my one opinion on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Eisner.
I appreciate what Commissioner Carr just mentioned, but I also want to make mention the Ankle Harbor project was a one-of-a-kind project, and that's what brought up a lot of input. The other thing that I would say is if there are redundant emails, yes, we could say there were 65 emails of all, you know, against in general, but I think we should pull out any of the emails that are unique to the other emails, because people still have the right to get their input in. On this particular project, I think that we, we do need to make sure that the people have their say. It's not us, it's them. So, that's my feeling on that. I had a couple of notes here, so I wanted to bring up about discussing with residents when something that might be coming about on the agenda. I know that we're not allowed to speak about it, but I just don't understand why we're not allowed to speak to the residents. They're the ones that need to hear. It's a, it's, I think it's something that we really have to consider in changing, so.
If, on that particular one, if you don't mind contacting City Attorney Trask, and he can have a conversation with you on that. I don't think it's as limited as you believe it is. Maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're saying, but I, I think that one's an easy one.
Well, it's number 4B that I'm referring to.
I think you're just not allowed to voice an opinion. You can listen.
Okay. Well, we're, again, what I envision this process going is that myself personally, I'm open to everyone's recommendations. I think that there needs to be communication with the staff and see how they feel about it, and also give them a sense of where you are on this, and let them develop some kind of a response and bring that back to us for action and further discussion. We're not going to decide anything this evening or give a consensus.
Right. This is just for discussion. Well, the other thing I wanted to throw out there was what makes a decision, a quasi-judicial decision versus a regular legislative, and that's something I wanted to get some input from the city attorney. Number five, modifications. When something is brought up on the agenda to the city manager, does the city manager have to put it in, or is he allowed to refuse putting it in, is a question I have.
I, I think, I think the way it's going to generally work is that it's going to be up to you and he. I think if it's something that, there's very few new ideas here in city government.
Sure.
And Mr. La Couris has been here a long time. Some of the other staff has, have been here a long time, Mr. Smith, for example, and I think maybe if they can share some background with you and, and maybe give you a different perspective on it, maybe then the, or if you share something new with him, and I think city managers see some value in it, we're going to see that in front of us. But it's just a give and take, and, and of course, he can always provide a summary memorandum on anything that comes to him. It's just creating a process that we can do to try and save us some time here. But I, again, I think we're, for the next month or two, we're going to be a work in process in, in order to establish these procedures, but, but it's a good idea.
That's pretty much it that I have for now.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm off. We're bringing back Zoom. The courts are still using Zoom, so I think it's a great example for us to have Zoom as well. I would ask that we also present the BOC meeting on Facebook Live. No one's going to, we're not going to be able to interact with them, but just the more exposure, the better, and we, we want to get our meetings out to as many people as possible, so something to consider. Regarding public comments, I would suggest that if you're at home from Zoom, that you have two minutes to talk on an item. I believe we're going to be one of the most public-inclusive boards there is, and people are going to have more confidence in ever to come speak on a lot of topics. I, for one, did take advantage of being able to speak at many agenda items to speak as long as I can, to at times prolong the meetings. So, at the end of the day, we do have business to handle. We have a lot of business to talk about in Tarpon Springs. We want the public to be included throughout the whole process, but we need to do it in a timely manner, and there are going to be a lot of topics where people are going to come up and have the confidence to tell us how they feel on those items. And regarding emails as well, I would like for them to be no longer than two minutes because I do believe that people will be able to take advantage of it, and if, most of you know on the campaign trail, we had to answer some of the toughest questions in less than a minute. So, if you're sitting from the comfort of your home, I think two minutes is more enough to drive your points home, still keep you included, and have your focus ready. And just for the agenda preparation, I would ask if we can try to maintain that schedule of having the documents given to us the Wednesday before the Tuesday, just to give us enough time to prepare, and no further comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to give the staff an opportunity. City Manager La Couris, do you have anything you'd like to contribute to this?
Well, again, I think all the items you mentioned, we could do, what would be nice, you know, just in staying within our timeframes, is to get the consensus of what we're looking. I've heard some, some good things. Obviously, as you see, from our testing the new agenda and putting time limits on them, sometimes we're going to be close, sometimes we're going to be way off for different reasons. But obviously, if we want to start, you know, we want to get through the meetings before late time, and we know at the beginning of the meeting, we have to stop a meeting at 7:30 to go to the, the hearings. The ideas I've heard, such as the two minutes from the, from the Zoom calls, the two minutes from the reading, those sorts of things, I think that would be good to make that objective, and we kind of get some consensus of where we're at. I think we're pretty much consistent on, on Zoom, and, and for the BOC meetings, you know, we can have that, that happen as we get the rule written and get into May. That's not a problem for the BOC. For, for this meeting, we can get that together, and, you know, some of the rest of the things to get in place, if we, if we had a fast consensus of what we're looking forward to put together for, for a meeting to approve the different things, the times, and what you want to do, we could, we could start on that, you know, right away. If, if we kind of get an idea collectively what we're looking. Obviously, when we get to the meeting, if you want to change anything, if there's a change in it, you know, a timeframe or something else, you have another chance to meet, but I can kind of get an idea of what to write up from tonight. We can get that back to a meeting, get it approved, and then get those things started right away.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, do you have anything?
I agree with the city manager.
I know I'm catching you cold, but I'd like to get the staff input. Mr. Trask.
I have nothing to add. Be happy to do whatever the direction you give us. We'll get it done. One thing I would remind you, this is a resolution, and so now that the rules of procedure are out of your code book, you can change them meeting to meeting if you want to. So, so the resolution preparation is going to be very easy to make these changes, whatever you give this direction on.
Hopefully, we won't get to the rules de jour approach on this thing. Okay, let's move on to.
Mayor.
Yes.
So, the city manager asked for some clarification on these items tonight. Did we want to go through and, and tell him, or do you want to, as a board, say this is what we feel, so he has clear?
I, I think, well, the four, the four main ones that, I mean, and I'm just sharing things from the, from the campaign trail, which was the remote participation by Zoom, video, or by telephone, the public comments, increasing the amount of time for that, the emails being read into the record, and then, and then the narrowing, the, what we can, what each commissioner can put onto the agenda from a, from a policy perspective. But, well, those are the four. I heard a couple of others that came up. I know you've got some points that you'd like to make, and Commissioner Carr to, to city attorney, I'm sorry, city manager, La Couris, and I, I think that's pretty much all I wanted to do, just to, I think he, he hears what we're saying. I would hope that each commissioner would get with him privately and just kind of weigh in on this thing. I really want to see that interaction, interaction going on. I don't know if that helps. If you've got some other thoughts, please, please offer those to the city manager and, and see if that has some merit to it.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I just want to make sure that he, because it needs to come back to us for a resolution reading at that, the next time, right? So, I think that's what you asked at the beginning, that we don't discuss it again.
Right. Well, the resolution will be subject to approval and tweaking, as we've done in the past, but hopefully, before we get to that point, the resolution will be in your hands, and then whatever you see in it, you can have conversations with the city manager on that before we actually come to the commission meeting with it.
Okay. There's one thing I think if I could bring up as well, communication to the board or other people. I think the way the rules are read now, it has to go to the city manager, and the city manager sends it out.
Right.
It would be nice to have some type of memorandum that a board member could go ahead and send out without the city manager doing that on their behalf. I think it would give us the, more of an option to, to communicate memorandum style to the rest of the board instead of having to send it to the city manager. to the rest of the board instead of having to send it to the city manager and then sending it out.
I, I, the answer is that I understand, and, and I'm really open to that. There were some reasons why it was done that way, and, and I'd, I'd like to throw something out as to why it was. I think it was related to agenda items, additional information for agenda items before the commission meeting. I may not recall correctly, but please get with the city manager and, and let's see if we can deal with that as well. I understand what you're saying. And I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you on that either, so. Let's move on to number two. The commission meeting process. I just wanna run through these things, and these are pretty much things that I've kind of listed here, A through F. The time management would be what you're seeing right now, being published with our agendas, and hopefully we can stick with those. The defer items is something that I really feel strongly about. If we get onto an agenda item and we're really struggling on it, we really break through that estimated time, and we're, we're just kind of struggling with coming up with a consensus before we vote, I really think we need to defer that item, and that needs to go back and, and, and the commission, individual commissioners spend time with the staff and, and kind of collect their thoughts on it, get a little better idea, let the staff share some ideas, and then maybe when we come back and, and pick up on it, we'll have a clearer picture of what we wanna do with that, rather than struggling and then being forced to make a decision because, because it's on our agenda that night. So that's the idea behind that. The, the presentations, I think the city manager asked you during the orientation, would you like to see more backup and then less of a, less length in the presentation? Or would you like to see less backup and, and more in the presentation, more information in the presentation? That's something that we could talk to him about. Of course, my preference would be more backup and, and less of a presentation and, and give the commission a little more time to deal with these things. The Roberts Rules, that's an interesting one. I, I really think that that would be something that the commission would, individual commissioners would come up to. If, if you really have a little bit of a private matter that you need to deal with, don't be shy about speaking up and calling out point of privilege that, you know, if we're in the middle of something and, and you really need a little bit of a break, call a point of privilege and, and, and then I can either excuse you from the meeting that moment, and then we can continue on, or just have a brief break with the commission and then pick up in a few minutes after that. So, I, I, I think that's important. The parliamentarian is the city attorney. He is the person that clarifies whether we can do something or not, and you all know Tom Trask. And then there's something I'd like to at least discuss, and I don't even, even know if it's feasible, I've not heard back from the, the staff yet, but there is such a thing as waiving quasi-judicial procedures. I know the city attorney will probably weigh in on this at some point in the future. It's just a thought that on some of these really, really simple things that really don't need to have a full structured quasi-judicial process, that we spend more time on the procedure than we do the actual discussion and everything. There, there is a waiver process, at least I've seen in some Florida cities, that, that could accommodate streamlining that. But that's something I'd like for, at least for us to explore. That's all I had on these, on the commission meeting procedures. And let me go to Vice Mayor Lunt first on this.
I don't really have too much comment on time management. I think we're all agreed that we wanna move things along. We don't wanna spend a lot of unnecessary time structuring comments and motions, I think is what I've, I've seen in the past. As far as being able to defer items, I think that, that should stay. It's something that needs to be done every once in a while when we don't have enough information, or when the motion just, just doesn't seem to sit well at the time. As far as presentations, I fall on the more backup, shorter presentation time. One comment to the plan, or to the city planners, I would love to see more detail up on that screen than, than I can see sometimes. It tends to be a little bit fuzzy, and I'm not sure if that's a process of the computer interface, or the, whether we need to replace the actual projector or whatever, but it's, it's difficult for me to see, and, and I'm sure it's difficult for others. As far as Roberts Rules, I'm, I'm the rules guy, so I really like it. As a matter of fact, if you all want, I'm talking to the rest of the commission here, I have copies of Roberts Rules and abridged versions if you'd like them. Just ask me, I don't wanna insult you by saying, "Read this." It's a pretty heavy slog, but if you want them, I have them. I'd be glad to give you a copy of either, or both. Can't see much about the parliamentarian for Mr. Trask. The ability to waive quasi-judicial procedures, I think in some cases is a good thing. I agree with you that some items just don't need the whole rigamarole to go through to make a decision when there's one or two facts and they're already pretty evident.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll skip down to presentations. There's a, I think there's an opportunity to enhance some items to honor individuals, honor business owners, and honor property owners throughout Tarpon Springs. We've done this a few times in the past few years. Kinda went away with COVID, but it gives us a chance to honor somebody. For instance, I think it was Mitch Wilcox who came at one point, Christopher Still. Again, we have a lot of people that invest a significant amount of money in, in the buildings, that have successful businesses here, that employ a lot of people. I think that would be a great opportunity to, at least, it'd be a couple minutes, it doesn't have to be very long, to take the time and, and honor those individuals, business owners, or, or property owners. Going to a staff presentation or a presentation from a third party about an item, I would prefer to have as much backup as we can. I think that's the best case situation, then the public can read the backup as well, too. And I would prefer shorter presentations. And then to waive quasi-judicial procedures, I would, I would definitely wanna lean on the, the city attorney on that one and take his advice from his experience.
Thank you for that comment. Proclamations are coming back to pre-COVID, when we used to do those, so on a variety of different recognizances, special weeks and things. Commissioner Eisner?
I'm in agreement to what I've just been listening to from Vice Mayor and from Commissioner Carr, and my big difference is on the deferring items. The only thing I would ask to be considered is if there is a timeframe or a time constraint on the person who's presenting to you, to us, that we kind of look at that as well before we go to defer. That would be pretty much it, so.
What, what I'm talking about are, for example, like ordinances that.
That we need more information on?
That we need more information. We really don't have the policy exactly what we have set in our minds. The residents are up there giving us a different perspective that we hadn't thought about, and maybe that's something that would be, need to go back to, spend a little more time with the drawing board on, and then bring it back.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Kuliya?
Mayor, I agree with everything. Just regarding city staff presentations, I'm probably the outlier where I say more backup, more presentation. There, there's gonna be a lot of stuff coming up in the future, I believe, and these presentations might take time, so I don't wanna rush through certain city staff presentations or, or be expected to on them, but everything else I agree with.
Thank you. City Manager Lacoros, anything to offer?
Yes. I gave to you an example tonight, what looks like, and it may change, but here's an example of, of, that you have on your desk, of the meeting that we're having Tuesday. Again, there's time, there's time estimates on each of them. And the important thing to recognize from these and is, hopefully, we can get through some of the things that kept the meetings going till late and, and asking for the 11:00 extensions. I think the most important thing is the recognition that we have a place for agenda items in rough draft form, or in another form, for instance. Everything that happened on the planning and zoning board meeting on Monday night is already on that draft agenda now. Not the, not the part that's gonna come to you from us from the meeting, but what the planning and zoning saw. So you could get a head start in your preparation on those items. And anytime they come in, it's important to look and look at the draft agendas, because there's a lot of material that are posted, and we're gonna post more of it there. So again, you get some more time, as was mentioned, some more time to look at the materials. And we're gonna try to get on them as, as fast as possible. When those agendas come out, as they did today, the, the one thing that's most important for this board is to, is to, is an email to me as you look through them, whenever, hopefully on a Friday, but sometimes later. I need some more information, or I need to talk to somebody on item six, 18, 22, 26. Get that to me fast, cause immediately I'll have that department head, or myself, whoever's got the most information, to you contacting you, and before we actually get to the meeting, get you anything else that is not in the backup, which, again, we're gonna try to add as much to the, to the backup as possible for you to see ahead of time. But it's important, as soon as you see the agenda come out or see the items, you let me know which ones you need more clarification on. You know, send it to me during the weekend, however, cause the ones come in the weekend, first thing Monday morning, I send it and say, "Here are the commis, mayor commissioners, we need a contact about your items and stuff." Or if you need, "I need another item of backup." There's an item of backup that I don't see in there that I'd really need, or I think would be an advantage to the rest of the board. Then, then we prepare and get that, get that additional backup to. So contacting us, getting, as I said, and I said before, most of the time on the consent agenda, if I don't hear from anybody on the commission, then I don't have that department head here. Now, probably 80% of the time, that department head is here for some of those other items on the agenda, so they're already here. But, but if I don't, I usually don't have them there. So if there's anything, especially on consent, that you're gonna need to talk about or have somebody there, I need to know. So I make sure if they're not in special consent or in the other end, that I have those, those people there at the meeting. But again, we're, we're ready as soon as that agenda comes out on Thursday to be prepared, to get you information, talk to you personally, and do everything we can up to that Tuesday 6:30 meeting. So, that helps and saves a lot of time and questions for each of these items. So, that's how, to keep the agenda like you see for the meeting on Tuesday night, that's gonna, that's gonna be essential. And the only other note from what I heard is, is we just gotta remember on proclamations, we probably get 100, 150 on every topic that's, hopefully, there's some process of selecting the more local-based ones. What we're doing to keep the agendas right is we, there would be a proclamation the mayor would do up or to form one for a certain cause, or, you know, you know, something. We do it up, and we still, the mayor would, would send that forward. So a procedure for those type of things, the ones that are here local, are involved in local ones, like I know the first one we'll see back on the agenda, that's local-based, to bring those forward. Cause again, remember, all that comes at the beginning of the meeting, 7:30 we go to the public hearing, so you might eliminate a lot of these items to the end if you do that. So hopefully, we'll look at the ones, cause, cause believe me, you'll see, the mayor will see, and you'll see proclamations for, for everything coming through here. And there's ones we can send acknowledgement, there are ones especially involving local officials, again, local people, local groups that we can bring here and do, so, to look at that. But I think if we follow that process of the agenda, you get the information as soon as you see it of what you need, who you need to talk to, and then you'll be receiving the calls, or if it's a meeting or a phone call from that department head or myself, and we'll try to answer the questions before that Tuesday night meeting. And I think that'll go a long way towards the things we can control. Obviously, there's gonna be things we can't control in the meeting of time, but those are things we can control, and hopefully, you know, we'll work to, to do better on, on the backup, so you have all the information there and don't have to call us. But if you do, we're ready to mobilize. Even if you see something on the draft agenda from the planning and zoning board, and whoa, this is gonna be an issue, and you wanna talk way before the agenda comes out about it, just get with me, and most time it'll be Renee or stuff will be contacting you and, and, and giving you a heads up to that before even the staff presentation to the board comes. So I think all those things will be able to assist us as much as possible to, to meet this objective, and you have all the information you need to make decisions.
All right, thank you. City Clerk Jacobs?
I have no information.
City Attorney Trask?
I definitely have some current concerns relative to the waiving the quasi-judicial procedures.
I know.
And I have, I will have comments on that, but you know, the main thing is, is that if a state statute requires it, I, I really don't like waiving it. If the code requires it, I don't like waiving it. If case law requires it, I don't like waiving it. But the bottom line is, is even if the parties waive it, both the city and the applicant most of the time, under the law, that can be done. But then we always need to remember that there are always those other third-party affected or interested parties that are not part of the consent of that waiver, and therefore we'd still be required to give them the opportunity to present facts and evidence and testimony. And, and so I'm not sure how much we would actually be able to save time if we have to make sure that we protect their rights. So, just some thoughts when we move forward and get deep, dig a little bit deeper into that.
Right. I'll, I'll be spending more time with you on that. That's something I put in there as maybe a cost savings, but you know, you and I need to discuss it. And if there's anybody else, talk it over with the city attorney as well. Thank you. Is there anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Anything else on this side? Okay. The future meeting schedule, number four. The only thing I, I wanted to say on this is that I do know that many of us have other activities outside of our normal commission meetings, and, and I think I'm learning from the city attorney now that I'm in this seat, some of the things that happened here that have been, that, that are not allowed to happen because this auditorium is reserved for commission meetings and things like that. So, I wanna try and, and stick to as few meetings as we can, but certainly enough to have, to conduct the business of the city. And also, the, the one thing is, I don't particularly want to completely eliminate one night, or two nights, or three nights of a week, every week, because all of us in one way or another have a conflict of interest. But, but that's something we can deal with, and, and I think the city manager can talk with each of you privately about that and kinda tell you what some of the constraints are. I don't know how many boards. We've got a lot of boards that meet here. We've got a lot of performances that take place. So, meeting time and space is very, very limited, and we have to keep on a very rigid schedule in order to accommodate everything that goes on at the city. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I think the published advanced meeting schedule that we've been getting lately was pretty good for me. Unfortunately, sometimes we have our time blocked before those come out, and, you know, we'll just have to work around it as best we can.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Commissioner Carr? Nothing. Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, I just think we just need to do a one-on-one, cause as you said earlier, I do have other commitments as well, so, but, I mean, that I could work out.
Right.
No comments.
Okay. City Manager Lacoros, anything?
Just that, that we, we gave you the, the schedules of meetings and stuff. The biggest thing that's the, that some of the hindrance from other meetings, again, are the performances. And a lot of times, why we can't do a Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, and again, these meet, the meetings that are held in the auditorium here take precedent, but usually, a lot of times, especially if it's the big performances, they're rehearsal times and stuff. So, I not only have to look at this schedule, but we have to look at rehearsals times. But there are availabilities on some weeks and some times, as you see, even some of the projected budget meetings you see for, I think, August or whether, some of them are on Thursday night, seems to be a night you can squeeze, like this, like tonight. Thursday night, every once in a while, you can squeeze in, especially when there's no performances that have to be. But usually, why the Thursday, sometimes the Wednesday meetings can't be held, is because of the, because of the rehearsals that they do, usually before a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday show. But we do try to do, the Tuesday nights have always been reserved from everybody, everybody involved in the city, stage meetings and stuff knows that Tuesday night is meant for this board, even the off Tuesdays are meant for this board, and nobody's scheduled things on those. That's why Tuesdays are always open. But again, there's those other days on the schedule, like the Thursday, and I don't know if it has anything to do with the, the third, the last Thursday, however it falls when you look at all these meetings. But there are other times available to do things that we can adjust. I think one of the important things, especially what happened last board and with the meetings, of course, we got all this strategic, all these meetings coming up, is if everybody could, could get with me as soon as you know a schedule issue, you're gonna be out of town, even if it's not affecting, if you're looking and say, "Oh, I'm out of town here," it's not affecting my commission meeting. If one of these meetings or something is brewing to come up, if I know your schedule of where you're gonna be, you're gonna be out of town the first week of July or something, even, even if it doesn't affect a presently scheduled meeting, to let me know so I can counter it, so if something comes up and we have to have a meeting, I can see, "Oh, wait a second, we, we need to move it to here because, you know, because the effort is, is to get every." because, you know, because the effort is, is to get everybody to the meeting now as last time. If sometime on the schedule, there's no possibility to do that, and somebody has to miss. But, you know, we don't like that to be the case. We like to have everybody here. So, so wherever, you know, obviously if you're just going for a weekend, we've, we're not gonna have meeting on the weekend. But anything that includes a weekday and stuff, you just let me know, I've got a little calendar. And then when those things come up or the needs for the meeting, you know, I'll know in advance that you're gonna be gone and don't set it, or even some other events we might set that you might wanna be at. Um, we don't wanna set that ribbon cut or that dedication for that, that Monday, because somebody's gonna be out of town through Tuesday. So if you get that to me, that would help us running the conflicts of setting up, whether it's a meeting or, or, you know, some event that, uh, the commissioner wanna be at, and setting up on a day when you're not available.
Is it easier for you, Mark, if we share our city calendar with you? Like, for example, my outlook calendar, I share with, uh, with Trish, so that she knows what I'm doing.
Do you put when you're off or out of town or gone on there?
Knows when I'm off, when I'm out of town, where I'm going.
That would be great too, that.
Does that work for you as well?
That, either way will work for me, yes.
It's easier than picking up the phone and trying to chase you down all the time.
That's good. Just remember, remember every, that's why, you know, a lot of people give phone numbers. I give my email, because my email goes to my home phone, my home phone, my, my cellphone, my home computer, my work computer. Um, it goes everywhere, so I, so that's the thing that catches my attention usually the soonest, even from a call sometimes, so. Um, but, but sharing the calendar is perfect too for those, but there are some commissioners are not gonna, don't, don't use the calendar as much. So, so that way, you know, just an email or a call or something like that, either way is fine to me. I just like to have a calendar to know, not to, you know, set something that you can't be at, that you wanna be at.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Jacobs, do you have anything?
I have no.
Mr. Trask?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, on number five, I'm gonna just start with the, uh, city manager here. Uh, you've got a, your schedule in the backup, and, and, uh, I think you've talked a little bit about that already. Is there anything else additional that you would like to add in that regard? Mr. La Course?
Let me get that up. Again, we always post these and these are tentative, so the, these aren't necessarily set for most of them. The only ones to worry about that are by statute is when you get to September, there's issue. When you get to those hearings, there are statutory timeframes when you got to do. So September is the only ones on here that, that we, we won't be able to do a lot of adjustment with, um, for statutory reasons. Um, again, this is a good place to look, and if there's any anticipation of being gone, then, then to let me know. The thing we added, based on, it was talked about last budget year, and I know from what I've heard for this commission, again, we're getting a good feel of this commission and where they're going, um, was a meeting a little, almost a pre, there's always the three budget workshops with the commission, usually starting mid-July, but, um, we have, we have slated one. I put to be determined, because we got so many meetings with the, we, we have to try to look and see ones with available, is to get the commission involved even earlier as a pre-budget workshop. And a lot of those things in this pre-budget workshop in June is to talk about some of these items on, when you see B, um, C, and D, um, would be to, to bring those, to bring some things you wanna look at, at the budget. Um, during the time and during May is when I meet with the departments on their budget and Budget Advisory Committee goes through it for you. But we wanna, usually the time sits and then we put everything together and prepare for you in July. We wanna bring you in in June on this, so we can get more input from where the commission wants to go. And I think that'll save from some of the extra workshops we got. We, we've done the budget and one budget workshops, but the last several years, we've had three and almost needed a fourth one. So I think if we add this early one and get a lot of your input early in what I call a pre-budget workshop, I think, I think we, it can, it'll, it'll go a little faster before. So that's one change that you'll see on here. Um, and again, that meeting is to talk about the different things we have here. Um, we're all learning the community priorities for improvements. We've seen them in the surveys we've done, and, and we kinda know some places we wanna go. We really wanna gear on this budget about what we're hearing from the public and, and structure that. Sometimes it's hidden in the budget. Sometimes we're doing things the budget wants, but it's hidden somewhere in a public works or in, in beautification. We wanna emphasize those more so the public knows we're listening to them. So you're gonna see a difference in that. Um, the staff priority is city operation and maintenance. We're gonna go over the evaluation we did of all of our buildings. We're gonna find the things that we, we most need to deal with, um, um, to protect those buildings. And those things you're gonna see clearly in the budget as a priority over other things, um, for repairs and maintenance and that sort of thing. And, and that's gonna be an extra effort in this budget time to do. And then we can talk about, there's always contingencies in the budget. Ron, Ron, um, is there to put those and, you know, not hidden, hidden contingency money, but places where in the budget that are identified, and you see a hundred and fifty for miscellaneous stuff, that's for, that's for items that come up, items that change, um, which could be many different things. So we're, we'll talk about more openly, so everybody realizes what that money's there for and is there for the needs that may come up during the budget year. So those are some of the things B, C, and D are what we're gonna emphasize in our processes as we go through my meetings with the department and our meetings with the budget advisory. And again, culminate with an early meeting with the board, a commission, pre-budget workshop to go over all those things, get input for you of where to go, and then hit the road running for a, for a budget to begin the budget workshops right around the middle of July. That's our plan now, and any input or anything else, I'm very receptive to.
Okay, well, you, you addressed the questions I was gonna ask you that we're making sure we're pulling things out of the strategic plan from what we've learned so far. So, um, let me go to, uh, Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have anything that you'd like to?
I have no comment.
Um, Commissioner Carr?
Is this for A through D?
Uh, this is for the, uh, budget, number five.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, so everything under budget, right?
Pardon me?
It's everything, not just scheduling it, we're talking about, right?
Everything, yes.
Okay, great. Um, I, I appreciate the, the board having the opportunity to talk to the, the city manager and meet as a pre, um, planning, it's something we've lacked in the past. I think it's a good move. Um, one thing I, I do wanna talk about, when you talk about community priorities for improvements, we have to be careful because we're elected to represent the whole city. At times it could be, we have five or six very loud individuals who wanna see one project done, but we really have to balance that and say, is this what's best for the whole city and what the, the current needs for the city at the time? So I just wanna remind the commission of that, because community projects could be skewed at times based on the, the loudest individuals, um, in the city. Uh, a couple of things I just wanna, uh, to bring up on the budget side is, um, I would hope to see that we see some type of, um, sanitation, um, reduction in admin fees, uh, that we reflect the millage rate with the property values increases. So hopefully we'll see a decrease there, and that will, um, make it, um, important, um, in an initiative to replace as many water pipes as possible that are cast iron. So, thank you.
Okay, yeah, the millage, uh, there's a separate session on the millage rate, uh, is that correct? City Manager La Course? We have a separate budget meeting on the millage rate alone?
Well, it'll, it, there is a separate item, but we do talk about it within the budget process, because obviously it affects that.
And, and you could, you know, please weigh in with the city manager, uh, okay. Uh, Commissioner Eisner?
The only thing I have is, uh, I'm gonna have to work out some scheduling. That's pretty much it on, that I have on this.
Looking forward to the budget process, no comments.
You're okay? All right. Uh, Ms. Jacobs?
I have nothing.
I'm gonna check with you anyway. Uh, Mr. Trask, anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Uh, fut- future charter amendments, um, there were a couple of housekeeping. One's already been taken care of with the, um, uh, with the, uh, election scheduling. There's some, um, um, department head titles that we need to clear up with the requirement of, uh, the department heads living within the city limits. And then also, uh, something that would match what we did with the comprehensive plan and its update, um, something with the strategic plan is basically what I was thinking along that line. Uh, I don't know, and I'll talk to Mr. Trask, um, separately about this as far as whether we need to, uh, convene the, um, Charter Revision Commission for something like that, or if the commission wants to address other things in the charter that they think that they, needs to be changed. But, um, I think what we're gonna have is probably till early fall to, uh, kinda come up with what those changes, or at least those that we would present to the, to the residents. Um, that's all I have on, on that one. Again, it's, my interest would just be the memorializing the strategic plan and also, uh, requiring priorities be published every year that stem from what the public's needs are coming from the strategic plan for the budgeting process. Um, Vice Mayor Carr, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Lunt?
As far as the future charter amendments?
Uh, yes, it, it, we, the, the city charter, uh, has a, a process that we go through that, uh, we want, did one two years ago, but there's some new things that have come up, like the strategic plan, in order to preserve that, uh, kind of guarantee that that will continue on in perpetuity in the future. That may be something that we want, want to, we would want to put in the charter as a requirement directing the city government, the residents actually approving it, which in turn directs the city government to make sure it's, it's updated period. One, that we have one, and number two, that it's updated periodically. That was done for the comprehensive plan, uh, which is required to be updated every three years now.
Three years, yeah. And I'm fine with that.
So it's that sort of simple thing, yeah. Um, Commissioner Carr?
I mean, if we're sending anything to election, I think we should, um, really, as a board, look through this and see what other items we wanna recommend. That, that would be my only recommendation.
Okay. Um, is there anything else? That's it, okay. Commissioner Eisner?
Yeah, I'm in agreement that, uh, we do have to look through this. And at the same time, aren't we recommended by the advisory board, um, from the, uh, strategic plan?
Charter Revision Commission?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, it, it's kind of, that's kind of a sledgehammer approach and maybe required. That's gonna be the, city attorney's gonna weigh in on this. Um, I, I'm not sure, maybe I could talk to him, or maybe he could kinda tell us very briefly this evening how that is going to work, um, and, uh, or at least just give us a, a quick snapshot as far as his sense on it. But, um, the answer is, uh, yes, that, and then that would require probably, um, you could reconvene or since there's a, a major change in the commission, you'd probably wanna pre, reappoint a new commission for looking at it. I mean, that's my guess, but it's very premature to me even be talking about that at this point, so, but.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Um, Commissioner Kudia?
No comments.
Okay. City Manager La Course, do you have anything on that?
No.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs? Mr. Trask, do you have any thoughts on that at all?
So obviously the commission has the ability and the authority to recommend changes to the charter without having a Charter Review Committee, uh, bring them to you. You can bring them on your own. Um, the process would be to prepare an ordinance. Uh, the ordinance would have two public hearings. Um, it would not become effective until the referendum takes place and it is approved at the referendum like we've done in the past. As for, uh, any, any particular item, um, you know, I don't have any comments. I'd be happy to review any of them that have come forward. But I, I just wanna let you know, you don't have to convene a Charter Review Committee to, to move forward with your own Charter Review of changes.
The whole idea is just to give that some thought at this point, make a decision. It's some, I, you could speak to City Attorney Trask. It's a, it's a complicated process, um, it's an easy process, but the bottom line is, you get the residents to approve whatever they want, uh, that you propose, uh, from the Charter Revision Committee. When it comes, if you don't use a Charter Revision Commission and the commission puts it forward, if it's simple enough, I don't think that's any big deal. The one that was done for two years ago was basically just a broad look, a comprehensive look at the entire charter, which, uh, I think was about a six or seven-month process. I don't think that is what we're talking about here, but we can talk.
Minor revisions to certain sections?
Minor revisions, yeah, just something straightforward that you would think is obvious, but you never know. Yeah, okay. Um, all right, well, that's all I had on the, um, future charter amendments. Some prospective property purchases. Let me just give you a five-thousand-foot altitude look on this thing. Um, there's some that you see in your backup, four of them. One of them is just a, um, an opportunity sort of purchase that's coming out of a project that's being developed. Um, I don't know that, I mean, if you're interested, we could briefly talk about that tonight, but it, it's a work in progress in, at the staff level. Um, the others are somewhat things that have come up. Um, I know that the city, uh, for example, the, the disposal pond site, uh, City Manager gave me an accounting of the total that we've spent. I can't quite remember what that number is. Do you remember that? It was fifty thousand.
About five, over, over five hundred thousand so far.
About a half a million dollars, oh, actually, about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in, in, a good part of that.
One or one point two on the books.
And a good part of that was from grant money, but then we spent about a hundred and seventy thousand on penny for Pinellas.
Yeah, we had to spend before the grant kicked in. Obviously, we had to secure the site. So there's a period of probably a year, four months, five months or so, that we had to pay from penny money. But then once we got the state grant, the state grant is, will pay it. And of course, obviously, we got a long way to go. We got a ways to go. Hopefully not long, but we got a ways to go. Um, that grant, there's still plenty of grant money before we have to dip into other funds, um, to do.
Um, we, the Marine Commerce Committee that had convened to help with the char, the, uh, river dredging had actually recommended purchase of site. Um, it was leased instead, thinking it was a little easier to, to do this, and it, it didn't turn out that way. Um, it, land is, um, like, uh, Mark Twain said, buy land, and they ain't making it anymore. So, uh, that's something to think about, uh, to bring back that, bring that on the table. Another one is, uh, a mini park, a course park. I know the city manager's been going back and forth with the owners on that. Maybe we're getting close. Um, and then, um, the other one.
But what hap- I'm sorry, what happens to this site that we're thinking of purchasing for, for the, for the spoil site? For the, for the dredging? What do we do with it after the dredging's done?
It is returned to an as-is condition that we.
So what do we do with, I don't know, whatever, three hundred thousand cubic yards?
Well, the plan right now is to actually relocate it to, I think, over by the landfill, is that correct?
Somewhere to be moved, yes.
Yeah.
So this is just gonna be a temporary site for it?
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, in other words, there's a lot of, um, you know, if we move ahead, that may be something we would want, not wanna do, because you would wind up rebuilding it, hauling dirt back on there to rebuild and spawn, uh, the pond. But, but, um, there's a, there's a dynamic to all of that. And, um, and, and, basically, um, um, it's just something to talk about. And the reason why, and, and these are, these are properties that I've mentioned here, and they're also listed in the, um, in the backup. Um, the boat ramp is another one. It, it's not making any kind of decisions. The very first step would be to talk about these and whether they're a good idea, and then to authorize the city manager to pursue getting just basic information on it and bringing that back as whether they're even feasible or not, from, uh, doing a little bit of design work, price-wise, the whole thing. The, um, um, the, the one thing I wanna mention is that a lot of the deficiencies that we're talking about right now, that some of these would satisfy, we have a whole lot more, are very land-dependent. We're ninety percent built out. We've just been kind of not doing much in terms of property purchases. We've had some, but it's, it's ever, it's getting much, much more difficult to even believe that land is gonna be available, which some of these are, for example, a big pickleball court. I know that's the, city manager's, one of his, uh, things that he'd like to do, year two, right? So my point is that, okay, if we don't buy land for it, which is maybe something we wouldn't do, it's small enough to put on existing site, we would wind up taking some kind of green space out or eliminating some other function in order to implement that. And we just, we start shutting out our, our, our opportunities, our options by not looking at additional land. So again, there's no decisions, and there may be some other things that the commission might wish to explore uh, from the standpoint of a deficiency in the comprehensive plan, a service deficiency that, that has been existing in the comp plan that we haven't really pursued. Uh, that, that's my slant on it. Um, Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have anything more to add on that?
Um, yeah, actually, I have, I do have comments. Um, you've kinda heard sort of my feedback on the, on the, on the site that we're gonna use for, or intending to use for dredging. Um, there was a site on there for a boat ramp that's, that's in Myers Cove. Um, I just wanted to point out that we also need to, uh, along, along with investigating that purchase, if we're gonna investigate it, we need to investigate purchasing the riparian rights as well, because they're separate from that property. Um, and if we don't have the riparian rights the way it's configured, we'll never be able to get a boat in or out.
Right.
So, um, I had, there was a property, um, that was marked for preservation, and I was kind of, I think the first question that came to my mind was, what are we preserving it for? I mean, it, it's right in Greettown, it's across from the, the existing, you know, dock. dock facilities that are running on Roosevelt. Um, it doesn't look like a particularly healthy green space. Um, so I just wanted preservation for-
There's, there's a story on that.
I'm sure there is.
And there's very little that can be built on that and the city manager can explain all that to you and how it got to that point. So the, the development value of it is extremely low. So i- is that what you're talking about? And, and so he, I'm not saying to do that this evening, but that would be a conversation you could have to see.
Okay, I just wanted to make some comments on the ones that it, that it had been portrayed and I'm trying to recall them from memory because I don't have them up here.
It's Steel Coors Park. It's the corner of Cross and, um, Hope.
Yes.
Yeah. Anything else?
Um, no, the parking looked fine. Um, that made a lot of sense, but that was, I'm through with comments on it.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I'll, um, just go in order of the way they are. Uh, the dredge spoil site, uh, I would like to see an opportunity to, if we're looking for a dredge spoil site to purchase, um, if we also look at number four, Orson Property on the other side of Anclit Road, I think is part of the Stoffer Plant, um, property. So we could look at what we want to target as a budget and then also look at additional properties, um, as a whole. Um, number two, Sponge Dock Parking. Uh, I'm always for adding more parking wherever we can. Right now it's on the west end. There's not a whole lot down there. Um, the preservation side of number three, I'm not, I don't know if I could support that one yet depending on the cost. Um, number four, potential boat ramp sites, uh, I'm for that. I've asked the city manager to look at this property, uh, in addition to a couple of other properties to see if we could put a boat ramps there. Uh, the, the community's been asking for boat ramps, additional boat ramps for years. Um, all, all the boat ramps in the city have, um, some restrictions that are, um, city-owned. So I think it, um, it's something that we do need to, um, give the residents. There's a couple of other items that I'd like to bring up, uh, either from preservation, um, mostly from preservation, but also parking in downtown. I brought up about, uh, within the CRA, there's opportunities to buy some land in, in the downtown. If you talk to the business owners, everything they do, and if you go to downtown, there's, parking is limited at times throughout the day, um, where it's very difficult to get ta, um, to get parking. Uh, on a weekend, if there's an event, it's also difficult to get parking. Um, the more growth in downtown, the more businesses, the more residential, um, properties that are redone, you're going to see the parking again get less and less available. So I think it's important that we have some type of priority to say where the target is and what the plan is for downtown parking for a parking garage. Uh, in addition, uh, there's some wetlands just south of the golf course off Alter 19 Pinellas Avenue. It backs up to Curlew, I believe it is. Um, I'm understanding it's a, it's a, I, I can't say this on fact, but it's, um, it's a wetland within its own basin, so it can be mitigated at some point. So if we're concerned as a board of wetlands being mitigated and being replaced with homes, uh, this would be an area I think that the city should target. There's also a piece of property that connects to this that's for sale. Um, and I believe it's like a seven-story apartment, um, site plan already. It's within the county jurisdiction, but it's, backs up to the city. And, um, there's 82 apartment, uh, doors that are, um, plotted for that piece of land. Um, again, it's a corridor that's got a lot of traffic already, um, and it backs up to the wetlands. So maybe that can be an opportunity to preserve some wetlands and prevent another apartment complex from coming onto a very, um, heavily trafficked Ultra 19.
Is that the old Snowden's nursery site?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, oh, Vice Mayor, also, that, that was a park at one point that, um, number three that we're talking about on Cross and Hope, Vice Mayor Lund, that was, um, it was a playground growing up for many years. I remember playing on it, um, with the slides and, and swings. A couple other I want to bring up too as well from a preservation standpoint, uh, you've got property on the corner of, um, Alter 19 or Pinellas Avenue and Mears, both on the west side of the street, um, both low-lying areas. I think there's three different property owners. Um, the one on the southwest is a large parcel, um, that they looked at putting a long-term care facility there at one point. I think, uh, there could be apartments or condos also. On this northwest corner, um, I think it's plotted for, uh, some type of office. And then a little bit west of there, it's a narrow strip along the canal, uh, where it's residential, uh, areas. Again, these are all low-lying areas, um, areas that are sensitive, uh, to our wetlands and that's something we probably want to put some type of prior, prioritization into preserving some type of that, some of that land, um, as a whole. Uh, with that, that's all.
Okay. I, I, if you could share those with the, um, city manager in a little more detail, so he'll know where those are.
Absolutely.
I mean, again, I think we're, we're 90% built out.
Yeah.
Commissioner Eisner, please.
Yes, I'm looking at the dredge disposal, um, area. I, I happen to like it where it is. Um, I, I don't know if there's any better place than that. Um, but it looks like it's going to be a temporary place. That is correct. It's just going to be held there for the time being and then moved. Or is it a permanent location?
It, it could be made permanent. We used that facility the last time. Um, there's going to be a, it, it's not a cheap piece of property. It's larger than what's needed. Um, there are some, um, discussions and, and kind of long-range planning that the Shepherd Center is doing for dormitory. That may be something that we could land bank some property for them to utilize, uh, for their dormitory future purposes. And so there's another reason for that as well. Um, but the, the requirement of the disposal site is solely the city of Tarpon Springs responsibility. That's our responsibility to provide a disposal site. We don't provide a disposal site. It, it doesn't matter how much money we have, the dredging doesn't get done. That's the, that's the, the importance of that.
Well, my only concern and question is, um, we've been leasing it, correct?
Yes.
Why didn't we buy it?
Well, that's, at this point, it, um, that's an interesting question and, um, I, I think in, in, I think there was some sense that maybe the dredging would have been done, um, a lot sooner than it has been and we've been spending a lot of money. But I think many, the people that live, work and do a lot of boating felt that that was important enough to go ahead and purchase that property some time ago. Certainly would have been less expensive then, so.
So my question is, so we could go and lease this and put the dredged items on it and then not have it anymore? Or we have to lease this?
No, the idea is that it, it's, it's going to, you know, it's going to be, it could be res, I don't want to say it's going to be. It, it, it has, it's, it, it's, um, it has a development value to it and it could be residential, for example. There are some River Bend. It's up just down the street from River Bend and, um, that's, uh, single family homes. My point is, once it's gone, we don't have a site unless we can come up with another one. Um, and that one would actually have to be thought through with the Army Corps to see if it would fit and the Department of Environmental Protection, whether it satisfies the criteria. We, we, this isn't, this isn't the first piece of, I was city manager when we actually selected that site. This wasn't, we were like three or four parcels. This is the only one that would work because the amount of time from the effluent that discharges from the disposal pla, the disposal site making its way back, uh, east along the old railroad right of way underneath alternate 19 and back into the river, it gives enough time for the sediment in the water and, and the-
Drain.
-organic material to polish that water so it doesn't pollute the river. That's the beauty of that location.
So wouldn't we need to take ownership of this for 20 years down the road when we have to redredge again?
That's what you're talking about.
It's going to be sooner than that. The way, um, things have been happening, uh, we, basically the turning basin is, is unusable at this point and we far exceeded the, uh, time that we should have done the dredging. So, um, it's, it's, my point is, the questions you're asking right now are, are something that we would discuss later once the city manager determines the availability of the property.
True.
I mean, right now it's all hypothetical. I think there's a need for it. Many of the residents feel that, uh, at least the ones that are involved and, and, and rely on the river for their, uh, livelihood feel that there's a need to secure something like that in order to secure the, the channel's future. But I think at this particular point, certainly for this evening, it's very premature to be talking about that. It's just at some point, the city manager's going to ask us to proceed with some properties that we agree on and let him pursue it. And at that time, he'll be answering all your questions as well. And then when he comes back, if it's feasible, then it's decision time as to whether we're going to pursue it or not.
Well, um, I'm just giving my ideas as, as I'm looking at this. Um, now the Sponge Dock Public Parking over here, that looks like it's currently used as a public parking as well. So would we be considering possibly making it a double deck at all?
I think the id, it's, it's an opportunity purchase. It's part of a larger project that that, in order for the project to work, that parcel is needed as well. Um, but it would not be needed as far as the project itself, but the density is needed. Therefore, it would be a, a, a parking, public parking, um, or it would be parking, uh, continue to be parking as it is right now.
Got it.
And so we may be able to purchase it at a very, hopefully at somewhat of a reduced price, but that's another thing that the city manager needs to explore for us. And, and again, if this project, um, comes to fruition, if it doesn't, then it's still-
Doesn't matter, right.
-for sale.
Um, number three, I have no issues with. And number four, my only question that I would have, um, I'm encouraged because we really need boating, boat launches, um, in Tarpon. But would this little alcove be part of the dredge situation? Is it deep enough water there to, to create that boat launch?
It's, it's deep water there and, um, I know the area and, um, uh, I mean, you know, I wish I could tell you I, I knew for certain, but I used to work at Stoffer and I, I know that at times they had barges anchored there for their, their use and, and, so it is deep water there. Um, and that, the, the parts associated with the Seneca Corporation, um, does not have a T-wall associated with it, which makes it even more desirable for, uh, developing as a boat ramp. And, and, um, there, there's some other things, but I, I would like to try and defer that and for discussion further. Um, it's just, these are just some ideas that to give you an idea, uh, my idea is to give you an idea that that's something we need to talk about. Um, the election is in 2023. There's a lot of development pressure in the community and it's just, I think it would be a smart thing to look at purchasing property.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Cudia?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would, I'm going to start with my priorities from the, the four that we see here, although Commissioner Carr did bring up some great properties for us to look into the future. I think the dredge disposal site is the first. We need to be aggressive and try to purchase the property and, and help, uh, complete the process that the prior boards have done with, uh, dredging the river. And, um, number four would be my, my next priority. Uh, I believe we do need a, a ramp north of the river. We have one currently at Craig Park. We have one at Sunset Beach. We are a boating community. The prior boards tried to work hard to get a, a boat ramp and I'd like to be able to complete the process for them as well. And I like number three with the Coors Park. I think we can do a three-for-one. We can be able to preserve the, the big trees that are there, provide parking for the sponge docks and help support the Athen Street area that's about to develop as well with there, there's businesses coming in there too. And, and we need to have some more parking on that side as well as it will support parking on the west side of the docks. And we can create a mini park. Uh, I don't believe there's more kids in that area as there was prior, but it is a, an area that's, um, a, a lot of the Greek community and other parts of the community do go there. And a, a mini park that can help keep the kids active and, and busy would be a great thing. So we can do three-for-one right there with the preservation, parking and a little mini park. Uh, I just don't know what the price is going to be. And number two, I'm just curious to see what's going to arise from the potential projects in the future arising with the potential sale of this property for parking. I'm all for parking, but just want to see what's part of, uh, any other projects arising from it.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, uh, remind everybody that these property purchases, that given the price tag, they will be going to the public for approval. So, uh, City Manager LaCorus, you want to offer anything on that?
Yeah, I'll just, just offer a fast, since we're ahead of schedule, but just, just a fast assessment. On number one, the dredge disposal site, um, as, as you mentioned, um, and we have a member of the Marine Commerce who's involved about everything here about the purchase. Um, we did inquire about per, at the beginning of this whole thing, we're going to get it, we did inquire. I will not tell you the exact words that the owner told me, but let me summarize it and say it wasn't for sale, but he was glad to lease it for this purpose of the river. Um, he was rather animated about not selling it. So the ask of why we didn't, we, we wanted to approach that. It was something that the Marine Commerce is something we thought about. It wasn't, but there's, there may be a change in the stance of the owner now. And I think more people realize, this property, if we didn't get this property for leasing, we'd have had tremendous problems with it. There, there's just something ideal has, as, as the mayor talked about when he was city manager. This is ideal for everything to get the permitting stuff set for it. I don't know, as we were looking for alternatives back then of if we didn't get this, there was not a good alternative. And so it had been more, there were not any good alternatives out there. We could have probably made something work. It'd have probably been more expensive, but there wasn't a good alternative. Losing that, when it comes up, whenever the dredge comes up, 1050, whenever it comes up again, that's going to be a serious issue of our responsibility of providing this. This would, this would secure that and not have the worry of whoever the city manager and commission then is to have to find the site and there be a site not available. So that was the whole, that wa, that's the whole thing about this piece of property and the idealness of it lending to dredge the Anclit River. Um, Sponge Docks Public Parking Site, um, I can tell you, and I'm sure the, the whispers are going to get out after this meeting, probably in May, there's a potential hotel project across the street from this that you're going to be seeing. Um, you know, we're not exactly sure, but they did meet the deadline to go to the next TRC meeting, which I think is going to be this week or next week. Um, whenever it is, it's coming up soon because, um, it may be something to begin the process. Um, one of the things we learned from them, and as you know, and this, this board changed it, my orders from the other board, any potential sites downtown of the docks, I'm supposed to, to continuously 24/7 look for. They may know to us that they bought all the property, but they have no need for this piece of property that she on there. And we immediately say, well, wait a second, before you decide who you're going to get rid of, the city would, would, would may like, and we would want the first opportunity to take a stab at it. If you're not going to use it, you don't need it. Um, and again, it's parking now, but the owners before this stopped the parking on this property. As we got close to this deal where they were looking for a deal for somebody to buy across the way, um, I think they stopped it. Um, there was a purchase of one of our local businesses that property that kind of fell through, um, for additional parking. So if we're receptive to the hotel project and they're still going through for it and they have this piece of land available for us, um, we have opportunity to take full advantage of. But again, a lot's going to have to happen with, with the project across the street before we get this. But this is something that could go in a frame of time that by the next election, a refer, we, we could have the referendum, this item. Coors Park, I loved as a kid. I hated, we had a 30-year lease. The city had a 30-year lease on it. When it ran out, the city, obviously the city said, well, we want to renew it or buy it or something. Um, the answer was no. Um, it's sat there since then. The problem was it is in coastal high har, high hazard area. It, right now has, has no density and in a coastal high hazard, you can't gain density. So there's really not a lot that can be done, but it's got the beautiful old trees and the memories of a lot of people going to that park and the potential. It's the only real green space, um, down at the Sponge Docks area. We had looked at it before for some other things. So the problem is we've gone from, we've gone for a separation of prices of over one and a half million to, we may be down to a separation of three or 400,000 of the price now. But we started out him, the want of two million dollars for this property. Um, it's come down, I think. Um, it's not come down to what we were offering, um, in the 350 area, which is still probably higher, it's going to get appraised, but we couldn't even get to the appraisal process yet. But we've had contact again with the owner. So again, this may be something where we can come to a price to go the people with and see if the people want it, um, if it's worth it. Again, I love this piece of property, so I, I'm a little partial, but we'll see where that goes. And then of course, the fourth one to look, the biggest problem with all the land on the Stoffer site is, and we have asked about it, we acquired about- and we have asked about it, we acquired about land on the other side of that. The whole hurdle that we have to get over first for this is they don't want to separate. They want whatever they do with it to go as a whole. So they have not been receptive in the last five, six, how many years we've been talking to them about about us maybe be involved in what's going on there.
So they want to sit on everything until the EPA says you could do.
They have not, yeah, they do not want to, they they are not, they are not interested in in any separation of property and doing, dealing with it as a whole. So the first thing to do is investigate to see if that, if they're coming off that or not. If they are, then that's when we do the analysis of, is it feasible? So again, but that's something potentially to look at and 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 see because some of the other sites we looked at are just not capable, you know, we've eliminated some other sites that we haven't talked about. So that's just why this is on there because it's gone a long time. We haven't talked to them about their feelings in a long time. So we will be talking to them again and report back to you. But again, we want to look at it as a as a possibility, especially with the mayor's knowledge of that land and the water and and the feasibility of it. We want to try to explore that a little more. So again, that's that's why those were put on there. And I'm very well acquainted with the Mills property, I call it. Again, the city went against the, what I call the monstrosity structure of apartments that they wanted to put. They've got very little upland to put the the property on, and we were against it with the county. But there's a lot of problems with putting all of that on one space, so it's up for sale again. So preserving that, even even the piece of upland may be an advantage of what the county might have, they'd agreed to permit on that property. And I know what they wanted to permit on this property is not something this commission wants to see the course of action for. So I'm aware of that property. And again, I'll watch, and Mr. Mills caught me at the distant meeting about another piece of property he has on off distant. So I've talked to Mr. Mills many times over the last three or four years about different things. So I can deal with him and and talk to him also on that property.
Ms. Jacobs. Mr. Trask.
Nothing, thank you.
The next item is the Anclot Harbor's update. I thought this might be a good thing. Ms. Vincent, you're here?
Yes.
Okay. And all, I'm just going to say a couple of words. I I know during the campaign, there were, there was some social media activity as far as status and things of that nature. And and some of the candidates were offering statuses and things. I think, well, everybody's a commissioner here now. And I think that Ms. Vincent created an excellent exhibit that kind of tracked the permitting process. And Ms. Vincent, would it be all right, same manager?
Yeah, yeah, just to summarize what she, obviously, this was what I asked for and stuff. It was a lot more that's going on, but I think she did a great job to, so just to summarize this. And obviously, it's available to the public and everybody to look at the progress of this.
So my point is, you could go to directly the regulatory permit search sites and and see what they've got. But Ms. Vincent may have some additional insight that you might want to touch base with her if you get inquiries from the public as far as what the status of the various aspects of the project are. That's all I have.
So, yeah, just the content of this really follows kind of line by line the conditions of approval that were put in place when the final plan development was approved by resolution. So you see all those, you know, that listed in the left-hand column, and then the actual text of what those conditions are. And then you've got a field for, you know, is, what's the, what's the time point that those really get triggered? When are we looking to see them? Is the requirement satisfied? And then just additional notes. So we're trying to keep this up to date as we can. We do have it posted on the the developer page for the Anclot Harbor site on Connect Tarpon. So when you go to Connect Tarpon, there's a subheading for developer projects, and then the Anclot Harbor site is there. So we've been trying to keep everything up there. If you have specific questions about something on here, you know, I don't want to try to go through this line by line because there's just a lot of information. You know, if you want a short answer right now, you know, not not everything is complete and no permits for construction have been issued, so.
Okay. I I think that's all I wanted to have said this evening. Same manager, of course, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lunt. Commissioner Carr. Commissioner Eisen. Commissioner Couliot.
No comment.
Okay, Ms. Jacobs.
No comments, thank you.
Keeping you there, Mr. Trask.
No comments, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Trask. On the comprehensive plan, land development code, near-term amendments. Commissioner Carr brought up an interesting point as far as moratorium on on apartments. And and I I think his, you know, his sense has merit of what the community is looking for. And and the the easiest way for me to kind of describe my feeling of where the residents are right now is that is that they're they're looking around, they don't see a whole lot of land left, and they just want to see the city wrapped up. In other words, they they just want to understand what should, what they're going to expect in the future for the city. The comp, the strategic plan, the comp plan update, strategic plan that is being developed is going to create that vision with the residents' participation. And so I I think rather than than kind of looking at just flat-out moratoriums, there are certain targets sort of, what would you call it, development that may not be in the, it may not be consistent with what the residents would want right now. So and this would be dealt with through some changes in our land development code and our comprehensive plan. And I know Ms. Vincent's been working on that a little bit. Same manager, LaCorus, with your permission, I'd like to get Ms. Vincent.
Yes, Renee.
If you could say a few words on that as well, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. So there there are three things that that I've listed here that, you know, I think are problematic enough that I don't want to wait until we get through the comp plan to to do those, as were meant in the comp plan. The first, there's a, there's a conditional use provision in our comprehensive plan for, there are two commercial categories, commercial general and commercial limited, that, you know, very much brings, you know, that are problematic in the way that they're written and as well as the secondary use subjects in each of the future land use map categories. You know, right now, you know, the properties, as you said, there's not a lot of vacant land. You know, the properties that are probably most targeted for, you know, for residential are probably going to be on the US 19 corridor or the Alt 19 corridor as redevelopment sites. And so most of those, you know, so, you know, at least at this point, until we get better policy direction as the overall update of the comprehensive plan, and because of the kind of the problematic nature of introducing the conditional use piece into the comp plan, which is normally a quasi-judicial procedure with, through the land development code, you know, I would propose to just go ahead and remove those provisions through a text amendment to the comp plan. And removing the residential as a secondary use in those those two categories. Now, we have some broader things that need to be cleaned up as as a result of the entire update. The way the whole, all the structure of the future land use map categories are written, there's a lot of holdover from old countywide plan rules and things like that that have been filtered into it through the years. The second is, this is a more of a procedural issue, and this is something that Pinellas County has done in the last six to eight months. So if someone's bringing a project forward that requires a land use, a future land use map amendment, so that's a comp plan amendment essentially, and it requires a zoning map amendment, or there's some other associated, a conditional use, a planned development, anything like that, you know, the tendency from the development world is they want to get their approvals as fast as they can and go through as few meetings as possible, frankly. So the, and so what ends up is you get a package, and you've got three or four different actions that need to be taken in one meeting. And your, what might be a legislative item gets mixed with a quasi-judicial item, and so it gets real sticky. So one way to decouple this is, from a procedural matter, is to, basically, if you're going to amend the future land use map, and that's amending the comp plan, that that has to stand alone. And it's got to meet the test of, you know, does, is it in, is it in compliance with the rest of the comprehensive plan? So it it takes away all the other extraneous things. You won't have site plans, you don't have, it's like, is this a good idea for the comp plan to change this land use on this particular property? Just looking at it in, you know, kind of in a singular fashion. So the county did that recently, and I think it's a good practice. You know, now that, you know, that may backfire on me if we've got a project that we really want. And maybe it's at the discretion of the board, but I would at least like to explore that possibility. I haven't discussed this with the city attorney. If there's any issues with decoupling like that, or if it needs to be something that needs to be a text amendment to the land development code from a procedural standpoint, we can, we can evaluate that. And then the the third provision is going ahead and revisiting now the coastal high hazard area, policies that are in the comprehensive plan. You know, I think, I think we know what they should be, but they're not written that way. And so I'm more than happy to bring those back as, again, as an interim amendment with a set of, you know, kind of as a package for the board's consideration, so.
I I think that there's some technical aspects of this. Obviously, they're a little more complicated, and we're not going to get into those tonight. So I really encourage you to talk to Ms. Vincent about it through the city manager and and let her explain things a little more to you. The conditional use was one avenue that was available to a large project before that I wish it had not been that way, but it was. And and there's a little discussion that, you know, pro and con to that that you can have as well. But it's a very interesting conversation, too. So that's the idea behind that, rather than, and there may be some other ideas, too, for each of you. Please, I I encourage you to talk to Ms. Vincent and through the city manager about any other ideas that you might have. And she's, she'll, I'm sure she'll tell you whether something can be done in that regard and whether it has merit like she's she's identifying here. The the last item is the, just stay up there, Ms. Vincent, is temporary use permitting on food trucks. This is, as you know, the 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 food truck ordinance is one of those things that we struggled with. There's another kind of a route that can be taken, which is a temporary use permit that really wasn't discussed. It was, it was mostly for commercial where it's being able to do something on your private property as a special event, but on your private property has nothing to do with public property. And 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 that has been used on a very, very selected basis, actually, before the food truck ordinance went in place. But in my talking to at least one food truck vendor, that would have taken care of about 80% of their problems rather than going through the food food truck ordinance and modifying that, allowing a temporary use. And I think you, if y'all recall, I think it was during the campaign season, there were one or two people got up, and a business owner said he couldn't even have a food truck at his business for a grand opening, it simply was not allowed. And and this would actually fix that problem. And people could have a food truck at their home for a birthday party or some other celebration, just like they could a caterer. But at least they would have a food truck there up until this point, or at least until we we address this a little more formally with a temporary use permit. It's still not allowed to have a food truck at a home. Nor there's there are means for them to do that through our current permitting process. So that's the gist of that, at least to take the edge off of what we've got as far as restrictions of food trucks. Vice Mayor Lunt.
On the food truck part?
The temporary use.
I don't think I understand the whole origin of this well enough to really make some detailed comments. I just know that it sounded to me to be a little penalizing the way it's written. And it's not flexible enough. So if if we give them temporary permission, as far as I'm concerned, food trucks are supposed to be temporary anyway. They shouldn't be a permanent fixture. I'm fine with that idea.
Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, I support this. I was for giving food trucks more opportunities when we passed the code. So I think something like this is actually very beneficial to the residents as a whole, too.
All right, good, thank you. Commissioner Eisen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am also pro food truck as well. As I'm reading here in G, it's, it's, it shall be, a permit shall be issued for no more than 90 days. I don't think you need anything more than that. But I do think that it needed to be changed a little bit. There's opportunities for food trucks where there is no competition with brick and mortar restaurants. And I think it brings more people into the city rather than competition. So like I said, I definitely entertain this.
Commissioner Couliot.
I'm all for the food trucks. I just want to make sure that we do protect the sponge docks. I've talked to several restaurant owners, and we do have to protect the sponge docks in that area. As far as downtown, I haven't spoken to many restaurant owners and their feelings on food trucks. I'm all for special events and private parties. If, you know, parents want to throw a birthday party for their kids and they don't want to buy food and they want, they want a food truck to come cater, I have no problem with that. I don't want anyone to take advantage of being on a private property, a residential property, and selling to the public. That's something we need to keep an eye on. We, no more than, I'm looking at F1, no more than one mobile food dispensing vehicle is allowed to occupy and operate on a parcel of land at any given time. And just referencing like a big parking lot, that's considered one food truck in that big parking lot?
This is a work in progress.
Okay.
And it's just the idea of whether you would like to explore this. This whole concept has got to be developed further. But in my talking to Ms. Vincent about it, she made similar observations to you as far as not wanting it to be gained. In other words, taking a vacant piece of property and turning it into a business by having a food truck there on a recurring basis. So she's well aware of that, and and you presented another interesting point that maybe we would carry that a little too far. So these are things that Ms. Vincent is listening to each of us, and I would hope that you would communicate with her through the city manager again in private and share her, your ideas with her so we can have a pretty much a good product when it comes back to us. It would be, it would be an ordinance change as well, is that right?
It'd be an ordinance to do a text change to the land development code.
Do you have anything else to offer in that regard, Ms. Vincent?
No, I think, you know, I think it would be an ordinance or a change in two places, both in the general temporary use section. We might be able to accomplish it all in the specific food truck section, but I think it'd be easier to parse that out. I can work with the city attorney. But no, I think, I agree, I think the biggest, you know, I think the intent of the temporary use section is to address this type of thing. And by putting the very specific regulations in place, now you have to go to the more specific. And it took that, you know, when it was, when that didn't exist, you probably could have made an interpretation. But now, now we have a very specific regulation, so we need to amend it to get get back to where we need to be.
Let's see, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, as I was reading here, one of the things, it says a 90-day period. Now, that could be taken as a 90-day period in one location, or it could be taken as 90-day period in in the city in general. So I think we do need to, you know, fine tune this. But I'm, and also, I agree with Commissioner Couliot about not wanting to put these next to businesses as well, especially in the sponge docks area as well. So, you know, but this is something that we can discuss.
Yeah, I think you, I think you're you're basically stating to me what are givens. And I think that's, you know, you know, for, yes, the answer to that is yes. But how do we go beyond that as far as, for example, the residential communities and some of these other areas to provide some accommodation? I don't think the food trucks, I mean, first of all, there aren't a whole lot of places in the, at the sponge docks that is private that a food truck can go on to, except some of the parking lots that don't have businesses. So that that's something that Ms. Vincent, I'm sure, is going to be sensitive. But again, you need to talk to her about that as well, so.
I'm good.
Ms. Vincent, anything else?
No, sir.
Same manager, LaCorus, you want to add anything?
No, on this one, I think we got, we have good direction of where to go. We kind of anticipated, you know, from hearing all of you, we had that. And the same with going back to nine just for a second. I think nine, those items she said and those changes, I think those are, those will go a long way to accomplish what this board's direction is. So I think, I think nine is very important. And again, I think Ms. Vincent has brought forward some things where you can fix what you and I guess what the electorate showed in their vote, what they want in the future for land and stuff. So we've got good direction on both nine and 10 to move forward and bring something back to you. And, you know, I think that's collectively what the collective board is going to, wants to move forward with, so.
Now, on number nine, again, if you have some additional thoughts on that, please share them. This is just campaign stuff I'm talking about, things that we picked. share them. This is just campaign stuff I'm talking about, things that we picked up off the last 10 months.
I have actually some concerns.
Yeah, okay.
So when I, when I look through this, I'm going like, it's a, it seems on the surface to be a real, adept, short-term fix. However, I have a concern that, A, if it's rolled into the new comp plan just summarily, then I'm not going to be happy with this, because I think even though some of us aren't quite there yet, we need to take a look at more mixed-use development in this, in this city. And from my reading of this, I'm not quite sure that this wouldn't negater, you know, negatively affect the ability to do that where we would want to do that, which is typically in, in commercial or areas, like in the corridor of 19 and so forth, where, where most of these properties are. So that would be my concern, that we don't, it's not that I, you know, I understand the principle behind it. I just don't want us to unnecessarily restrict us when a year, a year and a half from now, people start wanting to do misused facilities like they've done everywhere else in the, you know, the US. And we can't do that because of our comprehensive plan says, no, you can't do that.
Right.
That's my only concern.
Right. And I think those, that's an excellent observation, that we just have to get to that point in how this is going to work. And that's Ms. Vincent's job. We pretty much identify what the policy ought to be. And then Ms. Vincent and the city manager take it. In this particular case, create an ordinance or a resolution that they interpret what we're telling them, and then they bring back, and then we make the policy by implementing that resolution ordinance. So there's a whole lot of discussion, just thinking and brainstorming that's going to go into this as well. And we're a part of that collectively and also individually. So again, communication is the key here. So, Ms. Vincent, I'm sorry, Ms. Jacobs?
No comment.
Mr. Trask?
No, sir, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Mayor, can I say just one thing?
Yes, please.
Just since, for people that are listening, since we're talking about the comp plan, we next, our next round of community engagement for the public, we will have an engagement work session or workshop on June 4th, and it'll be at our rec center. And right now, it's scheduled for 3:00 to 5:00 PM. So we're really hoping to get into the nuts and bolts and a lot of the meat of some of these issues. So I just wanted to put that out there for people, get it on their calendar, and hopefully, everybody can join us. And there'll be others, you know, we're going to all the boards, and we'll try to, the same thing that we're doing in the workshops, we're going to try to duplicate on through Connect Tarpin, so we can get that same engagement through Connect Tarpin as well. So just wanted to make that public service announcement.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. All right. What's the next item? We're done. Going home.
We're ahead of schedule.
All right. So the same to work on a little bit.
Unless you want to sit on Tuesday.
And what I'd like to do, we're at the end of the meeting, about an hour ahead of time, is that right?
That's great.
Okay. So what I'd like for you to do, and is this week sometime, gives the city manager some feedback of whether you felt you were pressured, something could be done a little different. I've been through this sort of thing before. We do something like this tonight. We learn something. We create some data. We get an idea of how, how long some items are going to take. What we had was our estimate. They may not match. Some of them may have taken longer. Some of them may have taken shorter. But we learn from that. So in the next agenda, we make an adjustment either down or up, and then we continually evolve. So at some point, we've got a pretty good process as far as being able to determine how long a particular meeting is going to take. And then from that, the city manager could manage a little better as far as maybe bumping some things. Now, you didn't say there is some kind of thinking right now, that there used to be things that would come out of the P and Z board, that there was an automatic expectation that it would be at the next commission meeting. And we're going to manage that a little better, that that's not going to be the case. For example, the May 10th meeting is going to be, no, April 26th. We could have had a couple of other things on there, but we bumped those to May 10th. Is that correct?
We're going to space the items. It's going to take a lot of time.
In order to keep the meeting times down.
We have told, you know, I talked to Renee, and we told the expectation, always there's an expectation of, we go to a planning zoning meeting, we're going to immediately be on the next meeting. Well, if there's three, two, three controversial items, that's going to take us past 11 with a bunch of other businesses to do, we're going to make an awareness that there's no expectation. Obviously, we'll do our best, but obviously, to manage meetings, we've seen several items come directly on there that haven't. And if we have to change advertising or stuff like that, we've advertised, and, you know, we find out, we'll just, we'll have to do deferrals to save the advertising of it and stuff. But we're going to try to manage that and try to, try to look at that, and try to handle that beforehand. Obviously, there's some issues that come forward we don't think are controversial, and then they're controversial, going to take some time. So that may be a case where we might have to defer an item if we already advertised it. But, you know, we're going to try to keep those, you know, we're going to try to keep those issues, and so we can manage the meetings a little better.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go to board and staff comments. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have anything?
No, this was actually a pretty good meeting. I'm glad we're starting out here, at least on a firm foot. And I think we all sort of know the direction we're going into, so I'm happy with that.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. I enjoyed Easter this past weekend. I want to wish Happy Easter to the Greek community this upcoming weekend. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Eisner?
I want to wish Happy Easter, Past Easter, and Future Greek Orthodox Easter coming up, and pass over to all who observe. And I just think it was a great meeting. We got it done ahead of time, and looking forward to working with this crew.
Commissioner Cullia?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking forward to working with this group. It was a great meeting. Orthodox Easter is this Sunday, and I would ask that our police department, they did a great job working with local agencies last year to protect and secure the Orthodox Church with the minimal appearance of security. And if we could just keep that up again this year, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Now, before I say something, did I, I did not go to the staff, or did I?
No, you did not.
I did not. Okay. So, Seem Manager Lacorius, would you have anything you'd like to offer today?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jacobs?
I have nothing.
Mr. Trask?
Nothing, thank you.
Major Trill?
So, thank you.
Okay. All I'm going to say is that the last month or so, it's been beautiful in Tarpin Springs. The weather's been perfect. We're still enjoying, it's a little dry. I'd like to see a little more rain, but it's been, it's been beautiful. And we've got the two Easters pretty close together. And so I think we've had some wonderful events that the city has put forward. And I'm hoping that we can continue this peaceful time and move ahead in the future. And there's a tremendous amount of people in town these days. I think the small fine arts festival at the sponge docks pretty much tasked the limits as far as the amount of people in town down in that area. But the interesting thing is, everybody was parked all over the place down there. But I drove downtown, and our parking lots were, were empty. You know, we need to find a way to share that, and we'll, you know, we'll see what we do in the future with regard. And please, again, communicate with the city manager, provide him some feedback tonight, so we can continue improving the process of getting things done in a reasonable way, and in a way that, that looks very constructive. So, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
And for the commissioners, we still need that resolution signed, so don't leave without signing the resolution.
That's right. We need that resolution signed.
Yes.